So what time are, okay, we're ready to begin. Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission for November 23rd, 2021. Can't believe it. I call the meeting to order. We'll start with you, Rob.
Rob Horgan.
Andy Engel.
Lenora Palatnick.
We have a quorum. So, thank you for Lenora. Thank you, Lenora, for coming on. So I will seat Lenora for Sue Fitch. So we have a quorum, and I'm Russ Dorenzo. I chair the commission. We'll move to, can I see? Can I see the agenda?
Yeah.
All right, so communications from the public. We put this on the agenda so anybody from the public could complain or tell us what we're doing right or wrong. Anybody want to? Nobody? Okay. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from October 26th, 2021.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All business. I can't say the name. What's the name?
Adamski.
Adamski.
And Synopoli is the contractor excavator builder.
Yep. So John, you went out on this, right?
Yeah, correct, Russ. Actually, I went there. The stone wall, it's fairly close to that little stream, but I don't see an issue of precautions are made if they put up a good silt fence because all the excavation work is going way up above. And on the high side of that, the good side is, when it's completed, it'll stop any runoff going directly into the stream while of time to percolate down through the stone wall area prior to.
Okay.
Again, I just think it's all on prep. If they prep it good, and it's literally two seconds from my house, so I can check it before, during, and after continually. So I don't think it's an issue of it correctly.
Do I have a motion?
Move that we accept this as a regulated activity.
Second?
Second.
Lenora, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Next is Bruce 67 Mallory Road, new home and driveway, report on site visit. I did the site visit.
Anybody there?
Yeah, I'm looking for the plan.
Okay, I just had about 15 seconds of nothing, so. Um. Can you see it now?
I can.
Okay.
Thank you. Could you enlarge it?
Yeah.
Or is that my problem?
Nope, nope. I can, I can get it there.
There you go. Coming down to Mallory Road. Okay, there it is. All right, so. This is a roughed-in driveway. It's not by any means. It's more like a dirt road, a lot of silt on it. Julie, if you want to go to the bottom of the driveway where that purple.
There I am.
Yeah, this purple stuff is at the bottom. Yeah, proposed gravel drive. Right around that area, there's, there's water coming out. So it's. Water's coming down a hill underground, and it's coming out right there. And right at the hole with utility conduits is a big pit full of water. And that big pit full of water is draining down to Mallory Road. And then following the road directly into the stream. And where it shows the swale going into the stream is bad erosion, not a good situation. So what we need, I think, is a drainage plan. And the first 20 feet of the driveway has to be paved for the first selectmen to approve it because it is a paved road. You can't have gravel to a paved road. So the first 20 feet has to be paved. The hole with utility conduits. Basically, that swale that comes down needs to cross the driveway, right where it says proposed gravel drive, needs to cross there. And go down to a catch basin which could be put into the town's drainage system. But that's up to an engineer. This definitely needs engineering. It's not a good situation. Now, there's a stone wall that comes down all around along that swale, and it ends right about where swale is. And from there down, there's no stone. Well, you see the stone wall. It's on the joint. So you could see the last 30, 40 feet is no stone wall. It's just open. Yep.
Didn't we ask for the engineer to come to the meeting?
Is there an engineer? I don't, I don't know.
Yep, it's Kurt Smith, and he said he could not come on.
Well, we need to tell Kurt, he he needs to take all my advice. I have no problem going upward from there, other than the swale itself is, is growing in, it's failed at some places. So you need a new swale, needs to be dug out, need riprap, proper stuff done, needs to come. I think it should cross the driveway, come down to the road to a catch basin, and then either go into the town's basin, or, or go to the stream. I'd rather go to the town's drainage system.
Hey, Russ?
Yeah.
Shouldn't this all be up to the engineer to decide?
Yeah, I'm just saying that there's, I don't see a plan, Rob.
I know, but we had asked the engineer to attend the meeting, and you know, the other thing I have concerns about is, do we allow property owners to tie into this town drainage? Usually, usually we want the drainage contained on site before it gets to the town drainage.
You're right. You're right. I'm wrong. You're right. That's why we're a commission. You're right, Rob. This needs to be handled on site, and there's a lot of water coming down. The driveway itself is full of mud. Once you get past this part, you're saying if you could pull out, Julie?
Sure.
It gets further.
You want to head over there?
Yeah, yeah. It gets further away from the stream. The swale starts right where that FD up 10 feet is, right at the corner there. That, well, it shows where the swale is, but from there up, it's pretty much filled in with silt. Then you go up, and it's all good. It's all good. It's, it's it's a good lot. It just really needs engineering on the driveway. I don't have a problem with the house site. I want the house roof drainage to go into infiltrators. You got the room, you got the depth. That's the way to go. So that, that's what I have, have on this. Needs to be a lot of engineering work.
I have a question.
Yep.
So EverSource was there on Friday, and they indicated I need to remove the existing conduits and replace them with five-inch pipe.
Yeah, I could see that. It seemed broken up at places. The pit at the bottom of the driveway is full of water, which needs to be pumped out. And you can't just pump it into the stream because you'll be pumping silt and everything else. So there needs to be a plan. So, so you need to replace that, that whole conduit system.
Pretty much, yes.
Yeah. All right. So you need Kurt to give us a plan for all of that.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good.
Best thing you should do is withdraw this application because you're not going to get it done in a month, and we have to vote in a month by law, by regulation. If we look at this in a month, we're gonna, and I know it'll be hard to get an engineer, but it's up to you. You keep the application, but I think you should withdraw it, and then come in with a new application, knowing what you know now.
Very good.
All right.
Yes.
Do you withdraw the application?
I'll ask Kurt.
All right, you could do that, and you could notify the town land use office and withdraw the application.
Okay, very good.
But if he thinks he could get it all done, showing erosion control, because you can now be digging a big trench, I have no problem with the house site, other than roof drainage goes to the ground. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Any, anybody on the commission have questions? Make sure Kurt knows that he can't tie into the town's system. He's got to detain the water based on calculations and handle it on site.
Will do.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I think, John, you want to add something onto our agenda? John Cody or Pat?
Russ, I came in late.
Hi, Sue.
Hi.
I seat Sue Fitch for John Smolaga. So she, now you're on.
Okay.
We already went through that, but the next is, I don't know, John, you're on mute. John Cody.
No, that's good. No, so I got this app hitting on application inquiry from upstairs, the town hall about the bridge on Painter Hill. Originally, I would, I thought I had the ability to exercise like an emergency repair type situation. So it's the culvert that needs to be replaced. I went back and I looked at the past ones that we did, and I plagiarized from ONG, Brian Neff, and everyone else.
Well, wait, wait, wait.
Too fast. All right.
Let's set this up.
The bridge on Painter.
The town of Roxbury needs to replace the culverts on the bridge on Painter Hill Road, very close to where Rainy Hill Road joins. The reason is the headwalls are falling in, and the pipe on the bottom has rusted out. I looked at this with Frank Lasky in July of 2021 for Barbara, and recommended to Barbara, you didn't need engineers, you didn't need to go to bid, the town could do this and save a boatload of money, but you need a wetland permit because you're just replacing what's there with the same size pipes. That's what I reported back to Barbara, and nothing happened until a month ago, where the town did decide that it could do this. But John, correct me if I'm wrong, they don't feel we need headwalls. So the headwalls will go, you place the pipes, and you put guardrails. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the reason why I'm not stepping down, because I'm a selectman of the town, it could have an ethical, you know, the whole, you should step down when you have a conflict of interest. I don't. My interest is in what's best for not only the town, but for wetlands. So I'm going to stay on this as a voting member because I want it done right. And I think if I step down, I have no say in it. So I want it done right.
Excuse me, Russ?
Yes.
Do you want to add this to the agenda before you continue?
Oh, boy. Thank God for Julie. Do I, so now that I've set it out for you, the town didn't get on the agenda. Do I have a motion to put this on the agenda?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 So a couple days ago, John Cody emailed me, said this is an emergency action. I'm going to approve this because the, the paving plants are closed, the asphalt plants are going to close any, any day now, depending on the weather. If we get snow, it's all done. So I said, but there's nothing in the regulations that allow a wetland enforcement officer to do an emergency action. Has to be done by the commission. What deep recommends is that if you have an emergency action, you do the emergency action. The commission issues a notice of violation after you do the emergency action. I to me, it's insane to say, just do what you're going to do, and then we'll issue an NOV, and then we'll tell you what we think. No, I said that this needs to come to the commission. The commission will hear what the proposal is. There's no engineering on it. And the commission will decide if, if it's an emergency action. Why it may be is because the headwalls are tilting, tilting, but they have been for months now. And this has been an issue since early 2021. There's the same kind of issue on Squire Road, same issue, and nothing's been done because Barbara wanted to go for grants for this stuff. I cautioned her against this, that we didn't have the time. And when you go for grants, takes a lot of time, got to put out bids, got to go through all kinds of hoops, and it's not worth it. We could, we can handle this as a town. But somewhere along the line, things changed, and then what Frank Lasky and I decided in August is now coming to fruition, that we're going to save $300,000 by not going out to bid or have a contractor do this. It's a simple replacement. It's nothing overly complicated. But I'm not going to advocate for this because I want the commission to be the ones that decide, based on the facts that John will present, whether this is an emergency action, and they need approval tonight to go. If we do that, we're for, we're going around the 15-day public notice period, where anybody in the public can submit 25 names on a petition and petition for a public hearing. I'll say that I, I know no one interested in that, but that's the law. And we could call it an, an emergency action and let them go tomorrow. So John, you explained to me in an email what you wanted to do, based on past projects similar to this from ONG. So go ahead and present your case.
Okay. Julie, do you have a picture of the headwall there?
Um, I do. Let me get it shared.
The, one of the side angle, Julie, that kind of shows how it's falling towards. And the only thing I would add, Russ, since she's pulling that up, is that Hurricane Ida really.
Matt, would you say your name for the record?
My apologies. Patrick Roy, first selectman.
Right.
So Hurricane Ida did a lot more damage, and that's what really truly destroyed the headwall and made this a problem. And there might be another picture that shows the side angle, if you scroll down, Julie.
Yeah, I saw that today.
Or scroll up, actually, in this case. That's the hole that's in the pavement now, which I found concerning. And there's a good picture right from the top. That's where it's leaning forward. It's split. The next picture down should show a side angle. There you go.
Okay, so that shows our, the town's concerned with, with the headwall there. What I did.
This is on Painter Hill next to Rainy Hill Road, right?
Yep, Rainy is right on the left-hand side.
Yeah, um, that's a lot worse. It's a lot worse than it was in August.
It's precarious. So the plan.
Just for the record, for the record, that's a lot worse than it was in August.
So what I did was I looked back at other culvert operations and projects that the town has approved. And then I took in consideration the stream sizes and everything. So to mirror what they've done in the past is, we would dig a little retention pool up above on incoming water, and they would put in a sump pump, a trash water pump. Usually, they use three inches, but because of the size of this, I wanted, I figured overkill is better. So I found a place that we can get a six-inch drainage, which should handle all the water from there. We would pipe that across the road so there, it's dry, into a bed of riprap. We didn't want a scouring when this thing's discharging because it's going to be a lot of water moving out of there.
Yeah.
So I was talking to Butch, like 10-inch stone, we'll throw a good pile of that, have the water discharged from that to slow it down, and not scour anything or stir things up. Of course, we'll have to monitor this with serious sediment, sediment retention, soil retention. I was thinking probably a combination of silt fence and hay bales. I put my, my offer out there that I could check this twice a day as this is going on, probably, according to Butch, three days to five days window to do this, the entire project. It's, I mean, if you have any questions, please throw them at me. I could just spit out what I picked off from the.
Well, that's, that's, okay, that's my, that's my job. Um, all right.
Can I see the?
Any, any questions from the commission?
Hey, Russ, can I see the previous picture?
Yep. Julie?
Russ, I do have a couple of questions on it.
Yeah, let, let Sue go first.
Okay, so am I seeing that correctly? Is this two pipes there?
There's two pipes and a huge crack.
Okay, so we're talking about, I just trying to figure, so we're trying, we're going to replace, get, what are they going to like, get rid of that, that was that concrete stone?
Everything. Get rid of the headwall, get rid of.
Get rid of that, and then.
Replace the pipes with the exact same pipes, but not replace it with a headwall, but put guardrails up.
So.
I believe it's a bigger pipe, Russ. It's 83.
You're, you're right. You're right.
83 by 57.
Right.
By 40 feet long.
Right. It's a bigger pipe, not that it needs to be. Why'd you get a bigger pipe? Just to be safe?
Correct.
That's what you could get because it's hard to get these pipes right now.
We, we did have this bid out by Cardinal, so we're going with their specs. Their price was 421,500 for the entire job. So this actually was all engineered by Cardinal for us.
Okay, great.
We're just executing the plan, if you will. So I hope that answers your question. So that's a larger pipe that's what, what's there. All of that will be removed.
Right, so it is engineered, everybody, but the town's doing it instead of the bids that we got, which was 400 and something thousand. And if the town does it, Pat, what is it?
We're going to be under, even, even calculating our labor involved, we're still under 50,000.
It's a no brainer.
Yeah, and, and there, I will, looking at the work that I, I've been walking around or driving around town, looking at some of the work that the town has done. And because we're not using, you know, headwalls or anything, this is definitely in their wheelhouse, and I feel very confident in their ability.
Absolutely.
Do I still have one more question, Russ?
Yep.
The, so the pipes, because how old is this existing when this was put in?
50 years.
Okay, so my question is, you know how the, we require pipes to be sunken further? So, because I'm assuming that there's a differential there, but I'm just curious about that.
This design does have it into the substrate. Well, all designs now are required to be into the substrate. You can't, you know, they have to be two feet into the stream bed, which is why you got to pump the water around.
Okay, all right. So, and, and John said he'll be supervising the town crew for that because that's my, that was my big concern is because we've had issues with that before, so.
Yeah. Rob, questions?
Couple of questions. So the new pipe that's going in, are there two pipes going in? Or one?
Yes, two.
Two, and they're just, they're going to be equal, equal.
Three!
Okay, so.
Two.
So I'll fill you in, Robert, a little bit more. Sorry. I, I have been living the last, I've only, this is now, by the way, this is one week in office, but I've learned a lot about bridges and culverts. So just to kind of explain, the new pipe is going to be much longer. We're going to be replacing, you know, basically going 10 feet out of the, out of that length. So what this is going to do is, is on this picture here, it's going to extend farther. There's going to be that larger pipe that's going to run through the center of it. But if you'll look, there's two catch basin pipes that come in on either side.
Right.
If you look to the right of the concrete pipe, you'll see a, a C M P, a corrugated metal pipe. And on the other side, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a plastic, a black plastic pipe. So running together, there's going to be 15-inch pipes on either side with a T, daylight to daylight, and then the main pipe, which is 83 by 57, all of which are 40 feet long.
Okay, so it extends, because there's not going to be a headwall, extends each direction an additional 10 feet from the, from the road's edge or from the.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And then we're going to use a large rock on the sides, and then guardrails up at the top.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, just, the only other thing is just that downstream, you know, there've been a lot of issues with some of the property owners with erosion and flooding and things.
Really flooding.
Yeah. So this is going to improve the situation. Well.
I believe it will, yeah. But it's, it's not going to change that they're in a floodplain.
Right. And Cardinal, Cardinal is an engineering firm, or is Cardinal a construction firm?
No, they're an engineering firm that the town's been using for the past year on all our engineering projects.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Anybody else? Andy?
I'd had a question about the headwall, not needing one, but Patrick answered it by extending the pipe. It makes sense that we wouldn't need a headwall then. I'm good.
Sue, you good? Sue?
What are they?
Lenora?
Oh, what are they?
Lenora, are you good?
Yes.
Okay. Sue, who are you telling the shush there? The dog?
No, my husband.
Good. Tell him shush for me, too. That's great. All right, so. So are. Go ahead, Sue. Yeah.
The, the, just to understand this, the pipe that's on, the pipes that are on the right and the pipes that are on the left, what are they draining?
They're, they're changing those, right, Pat? You put.
Yeah, they're, well, they're, the, the black pipe, we're going to be, the one on the southern side, which is that left side picture, that's going to connect to a T. The other one, we're going to take back. The other one, we're gonna take back, we're gonna replace some of it and we're gonna tee it into a 15 inch pipe that's gonna run parallel to the large corrugated pipe in the center. So it'll be three pipes, basically daylight to daylight. I mean, they can be overflow on the 15 if it ever came to that. But most of the drainage is gonna be funneled through that giant galvanized pipe that's in the center.
But I guess I'm just wondering, where's the water coming from, from those two pipes?
Oh, it's catch basins up, not much, well, 50 feet.
The road, yeah.
Yeah, just on the side of the road.
Okay, alright, sorry, thank you.
But you could see what's happened here. Storms have pushed all that debris and it's caving in and making a very narrow path right before the crossing. You know, you see all that, and all that needs to be removed to make a clear crossing, a, a clear pathway so that every time it rains really hard, all that stuff gets washed downstream. And you could see the corrugated pipe is, it wasn't hanging out there years ago, believe me. Things are getting eroded, so this is a good thing, but the decision the commission needs to make is do we approve this now as an emergency action? So we can meet the asphalt plant requirement, you know, and we may not. Or do we wait, do we say it's approved as long as nobody calls for a public hearing within 15 days? Having said that, do you really think anybody's gonna call for a public hearing within 15 days and if there was a public hearing, what complaint could they have, it's gotta get done. But only the commission can make an emergency action determination.
I have no problem going with an emergency action on this.
Me either.
So, so somebody make a motion to approve this as an emergency action.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to say that it is, if we do approve it, if anybody does come in within 15 days, then work would have to hold up because that's the law. But I doubt that's gonna happen. So I have a, a motion, I have a second, all in favor? Aye. I opposed, so carry. Thank you.
Russ, I'm pretty sure the board of finance approves of this too.
I hope so.
Giving you all kinds of money back, Andy.
Thank you, thank you.
And, and, and there's a Squire Road, what are we doing there? Because that's not a good situation either. And I, I don't want to get in the habit of, of emergency actions, is what I'm saying.
No, that's gonna, that's gonna hold off till spring, but we have some time to do some engineering, is the question. I, I'd like to use, because it's, you know, this is rather close to the road, so there's not a lot of depth to it, whereas Squire has a lot more, you know, of a, a larger headwall. So I, it, it's kind of been determined that we need to use manufactured headwall, like a pre-manufactured headwall. And it's gonna be like an interlocking kit, similar to what's being done at Davenport. But we're gonna look at it both ways, we're gonna see if there's a, a grant opportunity. But even in this situation, a grant would have gotten us 50% and we're saving much more than that. So, you know, we gotta look at how the benefit lies and even if we can get a, a grant by us doing it, we're gonna try and save what we can and get it done as efficiently as possible.
I keep saying, can I vote for him again? Good job, Pat, really good job, good job. No, okay, we're good here, anything else? Julie, we're done, right?
You're done, you can adjourn.
Alright, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, I miss you guys.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I think in January, we're gonna start, we'll start going to personal, you know, going on to town hall. But, but only if it makes sense, if there's one or two things on the agenda. I think Zoom works better, so think about that, next meeting we'll talk about it, but I think soon, and I miss you guys, so. Alright, have, have a great Thanksgiving. And tell Brian to shut up.
Hey, he wants to flip wood. He said he'd flip your firewood.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.